Good afternoon and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Monday, November 6, 2023. All council meetings will continue to be livestreamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus, Mrs. Kelsmith, Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle, Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council, per fact, is not permitted. After your call, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Here.
We can hear you.
I honor my husband, who was a city Pittsburgh public servant from the 1970s until 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. Okay. Here's the situation. One, an excellent school was closed. Two, the building has become a threat and detrimental harm. Three, it should be condemned and sold to the city for a dollar. Four, it must be torn down. Five, parks and trees Pittsburgh funds used to make it a green space. Six, the residents of Bon Air care for it as volunteers. Why are we paying taxes for continued detriment? Why should we pay taxes for a detriment? We do not consent to a detrimental building remaining to decay the community we have built and maintained. Former Mayor Paduto was defeated and left in disgrace. He appointed a panel that claimed the Bon Air Elementary School building should remain. We, the people of Bon Air, have driven past former school buildings and heard the stories of human feces in hallways and criminal acts around those buildings. We, the people, say no to any use of the school except as a green space. The city controller is the fiscal watchdog for the citizens of Pittsburgh. It is the job of the controller to protect city tax dollars from waste, fraud, and abuse. Michael Lamb should have attended our meeting to explain why the waste, fraud, and abuse continues. Waste of thousands of dollars per month is occurring with Bon Air schools. Fraud was perpetrated with the claim of community support for the sale of the building to a developer. Abuse is occurring due to the threat of block busting and intentional infliction of distress. Why won't Michael Lamb advocate for we, the people, who have been harmed by this detrimental building? Who does he serve? It is no wonder with the school district being so bad and the problems persist. Tips and balances don't exist when the same person is controller for the city and the Pittsburgh Public Schools. Is that a conflict of interest? The Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of Bon Air. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belshever. I am not Jewish. As many of you are aware, I have been to modern Israel. I have been to Jerusalem, to the central Zionist archives, to do research on Theodore Herzl's work. Herzl created the foundation for the state of Israel, the modern state of Israel through political Zionism. I accept the existence of the state of Israel and the state of Palestine. The current situation which affects people in the city of Pittsburgh very, very seriously is a horrible situation, and it's rife with antisemitism. That troubles me a very great deal because in the media, in this city, and across the United States, the word antisemitism is bound up with people who are Jews. But there is anti-Jewish antisemitism, and there's anti-Arab antisemitism that exists inside of the city of Pittsburgh and across the United States. This goes back to Avram, who became Avraham, father of many peoples. Just consider this. The son of Isaac, the son of Abraham, Isaac, Jews from Isaac, and I think you need, all of you need to look at the Torah. If you don't have a copy, I do, and I'd be glad to share it with you. There is also another son of Avraham, Ishmael, Arabs, and you need to see the Quran. The Quran and the Torah need to be read in relationship to this problem in a contemporaneous sense, when people say, I don't know why there is this conflict, and why is this trajectory toward what appears to be, you know, mutual genocide, get rid of one people or the other Where does this come from? Well, the word Semite is derived from Avraham back to Noah, who had, according to both the Quran and the Torah, had three sons, Ham, Japheth, and Shem, Sem. So Arabs are Semites, and Jews are Semites. So there is both anti-Jewish antisemitism and anti-Arab antisemitism. We can't solve this problem by assuming that there cannot be a state of Palestine. The people inside of the city of Pittsburgh and across the United States who do not accept the premise of an existing state of Palestine, Gaza and West Bank at the minimum, are simply not facing reality. This has nothing to do with the barbarity that is involved here at all.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Audrey Morant. I do not see her online. Audrey Morant? If not, that exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name and neighborhood for the record. You will also be given three minutes to speak.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's at Katy Werther's Tires up at the top of the hill. I've been coming down for years, but lately, when we started talking about voting, which I say, we as Black voters, we do count, and if we put our numbers together, we can change this world, change this city around. But first, I wanted to explain to you that I had, when Brownie, okay, I drove my daughter, her furniture down to Georgia, and her truck, which had to be put on the flatbed. So I drove that down, but when I came back, my husband, Brownie, who had worked for the city, had a stroke. My brother-in-law had moved him into Katy Werther's Tires. That's how I'm coming to you, because I live in there also. Now, they moved him into the tires. And one of the elderly ladies was saying she had to go to Mercy Hospital, which is at the bottom of the hill, and I was telling her, well, you can catch the bus out there. Well, she came the next day and found me, and she said, there's no bus to go down to Mercy. We have to go all the way through town and back. So when I found that out, I went to county, well, I had been coming down here to City Council and speaking to my councilman, Mr. Lavelle, who would not address me at all, never answer it at all. We just happened to be on the elevator one day, and he said, Ms. Brown, you keep coming down telling me you need to go to County Council. And that's where I went. I went to County Council, and I was explaining that we needed a bus. Okay, at that time, there was a Black man, DeWitt Walton, that is our County Council. So John Deface, who used to be wrestling, he was our president at that time, said, DeWitt, talk to her. So as I'm talking to him, when I asked him, I said, now, I would address you as, and he's hollering at me and looking at the police, always talking to me, and I'm saying, what's wrong with him? Why are you looking at the police? But anyway, I told her that we needed this bus. He said, oh, my good friend, who his sister is my best friend, lives in the building. So that was Saludine's sister, that was Saludine he was talking about. Okay, when he said Eunice, I said, sir, and he started screaming, I ain't got nothing. He knew that there was going to be a problem. He said, we want gyms to come up to our building. He said he'd get Eunice to do it. I knew it wouldn't. Now, Eunice is dead and been dead for quite a few years, and we still don't have the bus. That's how much clout they have. But anyway, I had seen him. I'm gonna try to read this real fast, because I was so upset, I wrote a poem, and this was to John Deface here. This is an ode to John Deface here. Wendy said, you better come back. She hope you and you keep your promise to come again. She said, you and your wife really know how to groove, and I think she's learning some new mood. And it said, don't be afraid, the old people seeing that frightening thing, seeing, because I was talking to Deface here, my time is up. I still got a couple minutes, some seconds, I don't, but anyway.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I know you agreed to chase me off when I said.
Any further speakers? Any further speakers? Seeing none, that takes us to our Standing Committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, chaired by myself. We have one supplemental paper, Bill 2122.
Bill 2122, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of a Single Payment in 2023 to 2826 Edwards Way Associates LLC and its Attorneys McMillan Law Office LLC at a Cost Not to Exceed $174,320 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation Filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Need a motion to hold for executive session.
A motion to hold executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, bill will be held for executive session. That takes us to our deferred paper, Bill 2055.
Bill 2055, Resolution Providing for the Incumbreance of Funds in the Amount of $588,514.92 to Secure and Stay During the City's Appeal of a Fraternal Order of Police Grievance Award.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Fundamental recommendations? That takes us to our new paper, Bill 2103.
Bill 2103, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 772 of 2016, Effective January 1, 2017, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2017 Capital Budget and the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program, Approving the 2017 Through 2022 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing West Ohio Street Bridge by $130,500, Reducing Streetscape and Intersection Reconstruction by $20,088.09, and Increasing Ramp and Public Sidewalk by $150,588.09.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Fundamental recommendations, Bill 2111.
Bill 2111, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, Effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 Through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Mon Oakland Connector Four Mile Run by $531,314, and Increasing Play Area Improvements by $531,314.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion?
Do you want to go first, explain?
Yeah, sure. So this Lewis Playground is a project that has been on DPW's list for a number of years, but it just hasn't had the funding. And this money is from the defunct Mon Oakland Connector project. This particular pot of money was allotted to redo, to do the designs for a unfunded $5.1 million bike path that would ultimately replace what is a current car-free bike path known as the chute, which isn't great, you know, it's not a perfect bike path, but it is a car-free bike path. So that overall project, you know, $5.1 million down the road is not something that I would support, and so this $531,000 to design that project seemed like it could be better used elsewhere. And seeing as how there's, you know, no new, you know, we don't have a lot of funding for new capital projects, so this Lewis Playground has been something that Hazelwood has been promised for a very long time, and the playground's really in quite poor condition. So this is money to get that project moving along, starting out with resurfacing the basketball courts and pulling out a hockey deck that was installed at one point that sort of nobody ever, you know, it was a gift, but there was never any support for hockey in the neighborhood. So at any rate, figure out what to do with that space, repave, you know, redo the basketball courts. There's some retaining wall issues, so there's a lot to be done with this playground.
Thank you for giving me that update, but I do want to have some questions remaining. Can we have Director, one of you come to the table?
Director Chris Hornestein of Public Works.
Hi, Director. Just a few questions. I just want to know why this would not be, you would not use the park tax for something like this?
I mean, all the current funding allocated in the parks tax, you know, for capital projects is programmed, so they're under.
Is what?
Is programmed. So council has given authorization for previous parks tax-funded work. They've given direction as to where and what the scope of work is for those elements, and so we would look to this to say this was, this action would be in a similar vein of reprogramming funds from council.
Yeah. It's just, Councilwoman Warwick also has some projects she once funded for the, for DOME, and I know that those are important too. But I don't, I think that there's a lot of park tax funding still available, from what I understand, and from the controllers' audit, which I'll go through again. Matter of fact, I'll have somebody bring it out. So I'm just curious why we couldn't just maybe, and I'll work with you, Councilwoman, on this, because if there's a way to move funds from there, I think that's what we should be doing. But I also want to say, there's a lot of projects that are still waiting, so is this not considered a new project? This has been on the books?
No, this is, I mean, we've known about the desire to do work at Lewis.
Yeah. So you've known about the desire about a lot of parks across the city of Pittsburgh.
Correct, but, you know, the projects were not funded previously, so there's no prior year funding to attach to this work.
So, and I understand what you're doing, Councilwoman, but you have to understand, I also have projects in my district that have been waiting and are waiting and continue to wait, and yet I'm seeing these projects move forward as if they just happened, you know, just, as if the other ones are unrelated to these, but they're all related. And so for me, I'm gonna have, I have an issue with moving funds when there are parks tax funds for these kinds of things, and we have projects that are waiting to be done that in a lot of our districts. And also, I also think that there's money that we should be moving towards to DOME for some of the things that you want to move. I'm supportive of trying to find funding out of the park tax fund.
And just to be clear, there is additional funding here in this four-mile run project. So I am, because I do want to see DOME get the funding that it needs, so I have not moved all of it over.
You have been a big champion for that. Let me just say, for Greenfield Avenue, you've been a huge champion, making sure that goes through. I'm not faulting you for that or any of this at all. I'm just saying, we can't say that there's no new projects and put new projects, and then say that there's no funding, but yet we know that there's millions of funding still available in the park tax fund. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I had a question about the overall, you know, pot of money here, but since you're at the table right now, I was just gonna ask about capacity, just kind of what you were talking about. Not that in any way I want to see, you know, anything that comes to the table not get done, but I've been here before with a project, specifically Michael Flynn, and so, you know, we have meetings about it, and I think there's, and we're trying to work something on now. I recently had a conversation with the administration to try and get something going there, but we also had funding to do there. What I heard was that there wasn't capacity to do the engagement and design, so we were looking at other routes to get that done. So I'm just curious on, just in general, you know, like we have the budget hearings coming up, so I'm hoping you can be prepared to answer questions regarding capacity, because there's several, you know, similar situations as Michael Flynn that I'm seeing on, you know, funded through the parks tax, and in addition to this, I'm just curious how we prioritize projects or what the plan is to build capacity. Like, are there gonna be three Andrea Ketsers on the agenda, on the new, you know, the new budget here? I can't remember what the, what the numbers are in the DPW budget for that, but can you speak to any of that?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly can speak to the capacity. Obviously, like, it takes staff to move a capital project funded with any source. This is true for Public Works, it's true for DOME as well. I will say that, you know, we've had a number of vacancies that we were struggling to fill. We feel like we're making good progress on that front, not just for that parks tax-related or other park-related capital projects, but all, across all capital projects that Public Works needs to execute on. We've had some staff turnover, we've had talented staff that have left the department, so we are trying to attract, and that, that takes time. It takes time to recruit and hire. We're in that process right now, looking to fill. And then, once those staff are here, much like in any other endeavor, it takes them time to learn the city system to execute, because it is administrative in nature, it's somewhat bureaucratic, intentional, because it protects the city from a variety of liabilities. So we're constantly thinking about how we can recruit talent into this to do, and, you know, parks is just one of the project lines that we would, we're hoping to build capacity on. I do note, we have several vacancies as it relates to Andrea Ketzler and her team of people that are directly related to executing park work, and we are looking to fill those this fall.
Okay. And so, I'm happy to have the conversation, you know, in the future to understand more, you know, what the, how capacity plays into what we're gonna prioritize. And so, you know, as we move into that, can you, I mean, can you elaborate on Michael Flynn, and on what the capacity is there to get that done?
I think there, you know, where we're always seeking, whatever makes a capital project go the fastest, is having a clear and distinct scope of work to execute upon. So if we come to the capital budget process with that community engagement that tells us this is exactly what the community wants, and we've done our internal vetting on that in terms of like, yes, this is how we would deliver that. You see those questions in the capital budget project form, right? Like, there's additional questions at the end that relate to, how do we execute this project? What needs to happen? What would be the timeline for it? So we're not over-programming funds for a project that might take several years to execute. That's why those questions are there, because it gives my staff the background that they need when they're working with all council offices in the community to figure out exactly how we're gonna deliver this thing. In the case of Michael Flynn, I think some of that got attached into the conversation that might have been around Spring Hill. Those are two projects that are kind of, for lack of a better term, co-located, or maybe connect in some way, or potentially could connect. So we needed to kind of work through that, some of that there. And, you know, sometimes we are unfortunately faced with tough choices about what and how we work towards to execute on any given project. And it isn't a political thing, it's just an issue of capacity, so it's also like, any safety consideration would be, you know, something that we would want to highly prioritize in our workflow, where there's, you know, immediate or imminent risk of injury to the public.
Okay, what's the safety part? I guess.
No, that's just one of the ways in which, that's one of the ways in which we prioritize the work, right? Like, if there's a concern over public safety, for whatever reason, we would always try to prioritize that work above all else.
Okay. Yeah, that's, there are two separate parts, but there is this grand plan to try and connect them through a greenway, but they are, so like, the Michael Flynn would be Spring Gardens. They don't have a public, they don't have a, they have that one park that was like a little private parcel.
Yeah, yeah.
That was like a playground, but it's not suitable. We shouldn't call that their, their park.
Absolutely.
But they don't have a park currently, and so this would be, you know, Michael Flynn would be their, their park. So I'm not sure where, you know, the $200,000 that was allocated, that's, that is in, I think that is in line with the amount of funds for engagement and then design. So I think, I'm hoping that would answer the, you know, the questions you're saying that would be on, you know, the questions that would be asked whenever you're funding capital projects. So, I mean, I think it's there, I just think we just need to get to a place where we start that engagement so that, you know, so we can just understand exactly what all will be funded in the next capital budget.
Mm-hmm. Interesting.
Then the other question I have was just, the overall funding that's left in the Mon Oakland Connector, four-mile run, just to know, maybe, you know the amount, maybe DOME knows the amount?
Yeah, so there's about $380,000 that's currently allotted to improve the Panther Hollow Bike Path, which, I don't know if you're familiar, it's when you're biking from Oakland through Shenley Park, kind of ends at Big Gims. So that's another, I mean, that, if you've ever walked through, I walked right by my house, I walk through there a lot. I feel like as, as bike paths go, it's pretty good. I don't know. So that's, that's why that portion of the money, I'd like to, again, I am also waiting to see what comes out in the budget, right? Because from my perspective, traffic calming is at the top of the list as far as things that we should be paying for with DOME money, so that's, but this Lewis Playground and also this, the history of the Mon Oakland Connector project, lots of the, lots of the talk around that project was how good it was gonna be for Hazelwood, which I think was disingenuous at the time. So that's why I'm looking to get, you know, Lewis Playground is something that the Hazelwood community has been wanting to get fixed for a very long time, and so that's why sort of been holding this money to do that. But I do want to see where we are with traffic calming, because, you know, money is needed all around.
So there's only $380,000 left in the whole Mon Oakland Connector fund, like?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, sorry, sorry. There are some projects, there's the Sylvan Avenue Connection, which was a grant, and there's some grant obligations there, so, you know, we're leaving that part alone. Again, not, another bike path project, but one that, because of the grant that was applied for, is sort of in the works, so that one's, you know, just kind of letting that one continue.
Okay. I thought, what did it start with? What was the amount that it started with?
I mean, initially, it was gonna be, I mean, the overall was gonna be some $20 million, but it wasn't all, you know, it wasn't all fully budgeted yet, but that was the overall plan, yeah. And, and a big, a big chunk of that was gonna be this bike path that was gonna go up the hill to the Swinburne, just to bypass the chute, if, if my understanding is correct. It's sort of changed a lot over the years, but.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Ms. Gross?
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks, Director. So I think we've touched on a bunch of the items, right? It's like, so we know that we have done a bunch of parks in the last few years. We know that we have just gotten an audit from the city controller about kind of where parks have been done, where they think parks have been done, and we're actually still just kind of processing that, and we haven't had our public discussion about it. I certainly, like other members, have parks that I've been struggling to get repairs in really basic safety, let alone, you know, literally 50-year-old infrastructure on the parks, that is really sad, that, and that are not, that are really used parks, right? And so you've got kids at almost unsafe, you know, if it was any worse, we'd be taping it off, right? They're, they're pretty, they're pretty beat up, these, these parks, little, little tot lots, you know, and we really need to do some improvements on them that aren't that big. And we have, we're in between, we're right in between the preliminary and the mayor's final budget, so we have all these capital budget discussions in front of us. And then also, we have this gap in the, having enough employees in the departments to implement. to, to implement the capital projects. And council members have heard me say this before, but, you know, when I first got here, our capital budget was $20 million a year, and we weren't, we hadn't been doing any of these projects. Um, and so now we've at several years running of having 150 million dollar capital projects, but we haven't caught up in the staffing capacity. Um, and we experienced a very similar transition at PWSA where infrastructure repairs had been ignored for years. And then we were, not only had 900 water main breaks in a year, but we had court orders to implement hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of projects. And we really had to fill up, we had to change the operating, the organizational chart in order to implement those. Even when you're subcontracting, you need the project managers in-house. You need those contracting people in-house, um, and you need the architects and engineers, um, to oversee those contracts. So am I framing this correctly for you?
No, that all tracks.
I'm just kind of filling out, adding a little more words to what we've already said at the table. But again, just kind of like painting that picture a little more richly. Um, and so, um, how does the public find those positions that are open? What's our, is it right on our human resources page at the city? Go to cityofpittsburgh.gov and look at those human, everybody share the open jobs links and make sure that we get applicants for these jobs. There's a residency requirement.
That's correct.
For these jobs, um, but we're looking to people with backgrounds in architecture, landscape architecture.
Architecture, landscape architecture, construction management, we take a varied, variety of backgrounds.
And so that will help us get our projects done, and that will help us move like those capital funds. Um, and God knows, I want the spray feature replaced that has playground, and I want some improved playground equipment and surfacing there. Uh, there's a lot of little kids that play there and it's, I think, 1970s, um, um, infrastructure on that spot. And, you know, there's capital budgets that's been sitting for dining playground and, um, tennis courts and things like that, that we haven't been able to move. I have 14 small parks, um, in my district, which is a lot, and I'm really lucky to have them. Uh, but they are, you know, highly densely, really lots and lots and lots of population around those parks, and they really get a lot of use, and they get a lot of wear, wear and tear. And so, uh, we want to make sure that they stay safe enough for people to use and enjoy, and, and even get updates. Um, so I'm all here for this conversation, but I do think that this one bill makes it all, like, it's hard to talk about it without talking about all of those things. Like where are we with our neighborhood parks updates? Where are we in making sure that we're doing things fairly? Where are we with making sure that we've given the organizational chart the positions it needs in order to get these things done? So I just, I just wanted to chime in and say, I think that's kind of, there's just, it looks like one simple little bill, but in everybody's minds, we've got to put together all the jigsaw puzzle pieces in order to get these things moved and, and make sure that we're prioritizing, which is our, literally our collective job is to prioritize those projects. Thank you, that's all.
Any further discussion first round? If not, second round, Madam President?
I just want to say a couple of things. One, I absolutely want Councilwoman Warwick to get the, her playground done, I want you to get your playground done. But I do want to say that we have a lot of playgrounds that have been done, and I do want to acknowledge parks. They have done a lot of work over the years. And, um, honestly, when Bill Paduta was in office, I got playgrounds done every time I turned around. There was something happening, which wasn't common for our side of town. So when we get something unique, we got something unique, it was something that we were grateful for. And I will say that the person in charge of parks, well, the director and the person in charge of parks, both live in District Two. So, uh, so I will say, I don't think that happened before, because a lot of times over the years, they were also from District Two. Um, but I was, I will say that I think that there's a lot happening, but I do think that we have to ask the question about what's happening with the park tax funds and why they cannot be, and I'll work with you over the next week, if they can be used for this, let's move them. And if this money could be used for the Greenfield Avenue stuff and the things that you want, let's move it. And then, um, maybe the council members need to come up with our list of our parks and things that are important to us. But we did give 109, 106 positions to the administration. So I think council has done their, council has done their part when we approved 106 positions previously. How they chose to use them has been up to them. But I will say, uh, they may not be filled, but we did give them. And so, um, I don't want to say the council was holding up something, because we're not. We definitely would like to see some of this par, park tax funding move. And, um, but I just want to note, and, well, I'll talk to you later about it, Councilwoman, because I have a couple of concerns and questions, but I'd like to work with you on moving the funding from the park tax into the playgrounds and things that we should be using that money for. And then hopefully get both of your projects done instead of one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schlossberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I guess this conversation just brings to mind the question in my mind of how, once something is funded, once, once there's money there, how you as DPW visit and then revisit your list of funded projects to prioritize, knowing that full well that we're not going to get everything done every, you know, each year, everything on our list. Hopefully we start to catch up in the next couple of years with new fun, with, you know, with new positions and with new funding and with prioritization and with partnerships. But like, how do you prioritize your list of, um, your list of projects, um, internally? Let's just keep it to, you know, playgrounds and smaller parks for, for the, for the time being? And then revisit that as, say, you know, new funding comes in to say, we're moving funding from here to here. Is there an equity rubric that you use? Is there, is it first come, first served? Is it like, this was, we've been working on this for 10 years, and so now it's time? Like, need, need, uh, in terms of, um, uh, the state of disrepair, what is?
Yeah, all of those, all of the above. So I think, I think the interesting, that's a really great question, so thank you for asking that. To start, um, the thing I've encouraged all of my staff and all the project managers is in the beginning, when we are requesting funds or council is requesting of us to perform work, is to come up with a plan and strategy of how do we execute this project? Like, what are the steps that need to happen? Um, so that we can give council an informed opinion about not just how much money is needed, um, because at the beginning, it's always a guess, and let's just be honest, that's what it is. It's our best guess, and often our guess is wrong. Um, but it's our guess on how we would execute that. And then we would take that information, we would, we would go to council in an ideal world and say, we think this is the best way to, to tackle this project that you've identified as a need. Um, these are the steps, and this is when we believe the money should be made available to us to execute those steps. So some projects are, uh, simple, I would classify them as simple, uh, meaning that we can get them done in a calendar year. So council allocates the budget, and then we begin to move that work. And ideally, we get it done in a calendar year, sometimes just due to, um, you know, the bandwidth of the contracting community, maybe those things can't be done in a calendar year, but they're completed like the next spring. And that happens sometimes into the playground, it happens sometimes with other park improvements. Um, so we always try to execute on that work that we know, we look at executability. Um, you know, what are the contracts that are needed to execute this work? How many steps does it take? So we try to prioritize that, so we're giving a benefit to the community. Um, we always look at safety, so we always try to prioritize a safety improvement above all else. Um, so if there is clear and present danger to the public, we always try to execute that work, um, as best we can. Um, now sometimes those things are technically complicated and require many steps, but that doesn't mean that we don't try to do those steps, it just means that, you know, it takes longer to, to finalize. Um, there's more hurdles that we have to, um, attach to it. So those are some of the rubrics that we use. Um, certainly equity comes into a consider, consideration if they are, you know, if all of the other technical elements are equal, right? Um, then we look at, you know, then we bring equity into the fold to say, okay, is this, um, you know, does this community where this project has been identified, does it fall within, you know, a more immediate need? Um, but first we try to identify, you know, those things where there's imminent harm and our ability to actually deliver on what the community's asked of us.
Okay, thank you. I didn't have a bigger point to make, I just wanted to ask the question. Yeah, because this is opening up some more questions in my mind and, um, um, yeah. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warwick.
Um, yeah, so I just did want to clarify one thing in terms of this Mon Oakland Connector money, is that, you know, coming into this position, my hope was to move all of this money to Lewis Playground. And so that, you know, Hazelwood really could have the nicest playground, it's a pretty large area, you know, have absolutely the nicest playground they possibly could. But then the preliminary budget came out where Domi did not have the money that it needed for traffic calming, which is why I'm trying to do this piecemeal, and I very much hope that, that there are ways to get Domi where it needs to be and also get Lewis Playground where it needs to be. But, you know, that's, well.
We want to help you get there.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion, Councilwoman Wilson?
I think you generally mentioned this, but what, what is the, um, in the budget that's proposed for the, uh, DPW in terms of the position that Andrea Kettles holds? Are there more?
Uh, there are more project managers and associate project managers underneath Andrea.
Yeah, but in the budget, are we?
They're already allocated in the budget, yes.
Okay.
We just haven't.
How many?
I believe there are six, I don't have that information readily at hand.
Six new?
No, six total.
Six to, how many, how many new?
She has three people assigned, like it's her and two others that are assigned to her in that work. Um, and we are doubling that staff to six.
So request is three?
Yes, and then those are actually, those were previously funded in this current budget. So those are, those are positions that are available that we're just struggling to fill.
Oh, all right, thanks.
Third round, Madam President?
I'm just going to end with this part. I mentioned how many parks we had done and playgrounds we had done under Bill Paduta, and we did. But I do want to say this administration finished one of our biggest projects, and that was the Spray Park in Short Hills, which is amazing. So I want to make sure I give credit for everybody, thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, affirmative recommendation?
I'm abstaining.
One abstention, affirmative recommendation, Bill 2112.
2112, resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of Action Housing, Inc. For services relating to the installation of streetlights at the Flatiron Ford, mixed-use development for a sum not to exceed $23,400 and for the payment of the costs thereof.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I asked my questions before.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation, need a motion to approve the invoices?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved, need a motion to approve the P cards?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Just, just brief discussion, I just want to thank Rhea Price and Director, the Deputy Director, and, um, Peter McDevitt, the Director of our Budget Office, for going through these every week. Thank you.
That takes us to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Cross. Our first new paper is Bill 2098.
Bill 2098, resolution authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of Public Works to apply for a grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Tourism Fund for the Brighton Heights Healthy Active Living Center renovation in the amount of $500,000 for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
Discussion, Councilman?
I just wanted to, number one, thank, uh, DPW for applying for this grant. But I want to, um, understand what the, uh, Director Hornsley, if you come back to that table and help me answer this question here, thanks. Now we're in your committee.
You might as well stay here for the whole thing.
Maybe just say. Thanks. Yeah, could you give an update on this? Like, this is 500,000, if we rewarded this, it'd be 500,000 towards the project? And what's the gap we're still trying to fill here?
Um, I'm not going to have the gap information, um, readily available to me. But I would look to our capital budget proposal as what we think the, the last detail of gap. So, um, I don't have that readily available, um, but that's where we would have requested it as part of the capital budget process.
Okay, so he's not ready, but can you follow up on that?
Absolutely.
Like this 500,000 would get us to where in the project? Is the question? Okay, thanks, it's not, assume you're urgent, if you can just follow up. But maybe just hang tight, maybe someone else has a question.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation, Bill 2099?
Bill 2099, resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the construction phase of the West Ohio Street Bridge project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $7,764,987, an increase of $61,070 from the previous authorization. This resolution serves to authorize only the amended reimbursement agreement or agreements at no cost to the City of Pittsburgh. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
So there's continued, so, uh, Director, there's continued items on that, like 2103 was on, the finance, I didn't, you know, question, have any questions about that? But now that 2099 that we just read for West Ohio Street Bridge? And I think there was something last week too, so it continues to be different. Are these just all the payments to finally pay everything, all the work that was done?
Um, these are Domi-related projects. If I'm, if I'm looking at it, I would say.
Sorry about that.
Um, yeah, those are all facilitated towards PennDOT.
Apologize, it's not 2001 anymore.
What district does this say?
You might come up and just give me a rundown on, what's that?
Is this your district?
Yeah, this, this is District One.
You have to tell me, because you know, I don't know what I have.
Yeah, this is the, for the public, this is the, uh, this was the one that we, was fought in court for a while, and then we were, uh, I think we were forced to demo or build, so we chose to build, because we're stewards of the transportation here. Uh, but we were forced to, to build up to the height for the Lyle double stack train. But I'm trying to understand what, um, you know, there's continually bills that come, well, resolutions that come down the line, and I'm wondering if there, are they bills for us to just pay? Cause costs, I don't know, was there something in the contract where instead of cost goes up, they won't renegotiate this part? What happened?
Um, yeah, so Eric Setzler, Chief Engineer in the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, um, you know, the project is done, as you know, and we're working on closing everything out. So this particular, uh, bill is actually to increase our reimbursement agreement with PennDOT to bring a little extra money in, $61,000. We had a couple overages during construction, as typically happens. A couple of small change orders in the project, nothing too huge. Actually, I think the biggest piece was just increased, uh, cost for railroad flagging. So we had to increase the, the agreement with Norfolk Southern for that.
And they ended up paying?
Well, no, we had to pay for the, the railroad flagging, like the, the, the railroad personnel on site to ensure that our contractor and our personnel are safe. We did pay for that as part of the project. Now, of course, when I say we pay for it, um, the project paid for it, which is, uh, you know, 80% federal, 15 state, and 5% city funds.
Okay, and if we get, sorry to go back, but if we can go back to 2103, because that's also West Ohio Street? Is that just?
Oh, right.
Increase the?
So that is, um, yeah, that could certainly be confusing. So we were actually moving money out of an older West Ohio Street account that $130,500, um, and putting it to some other projects. That, that money was city funds that were never tapped. Uh, and that just goes back to the history of budgeting kind of.
Well, there's plenty of ramps and public sidewalks that need repairs, so thanks.
Right, right.
Okay, that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 2100?
Bill 2100, resolution providing for a contribution agreement or agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and Allegheny County for costs associated with the Armstrong Tunnel Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $1,013,017.62.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation, Bill 2101?
Bill 2101, resolution, amending resolution 276 of 2020 in order to authorize an increase of payment to the United States Army Corps of Engineers for certain remediation work to flood control devices along Sawmill Run at an amount not to exceed $611,468.79, representing an increase of $291,468.79, with such increase to be paid through issuance of a warrant.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm abstaining.
One abstention, firm to recommendation. That moves us to Human Resources Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Burgess, our first new paper, Bill 2096.
Bill 2096, Resolution Providing for the Authorization to Make All Legitimate Expenditures for Payments in Agreements or Agreements with Various Agencies for Job Development and Employment Services Necessary to Implement the 2023 Neighborhood Employment Program and Providing the Periodic Transfer of Funds to be Used in the 2023 Neighborhood Employment Program for Payment of Costs thereof not to exceed $210,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Firm to recommendation, Bill 2097.
Bill 2097, Resolution Providing the Authorization to Make All Legitimate Expenditures for Payments in Agreements or Agreements with Various Agencies to Provide Job Development and Employment Services, Wages and Fringe Benefits for Supervisor, Staff, Workers' Compensation, Unemployment Compensation, Vocational Skills Training, and On-the-Job Training, Outreach, Recruitment Costs, and Administrative Expenditures Necessary to Implement the 2023 Pittsburgh Partnership Employment Program and Providing the Periodic Transfer of Funds to be Used in the 2023 Pittsburgh Partnership Employment Program and for Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $240,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none?
I just want to thank them for their work.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Firm to recommendation. Thank you all for your work. That moves us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee, chaired by Councilman Wilson. We have one deferred paper, Bill 1666.
Bill 1666, Resolution at No Cost to the City, Approving a New Institutional Master Plan Under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning, Article II, Chapter 905, Section 905.03.D. and Article VII, Chapter 922, Section 922.12.G. for Allegheny General Hospital, entitled Hospital Institutional Master Plan, dated March 23rd, March 2023, on Property Zoned EMI Educational Medical Institution District 22nd Ward, 1st Council District. Public hearing was held September 13.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
Discussion, Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this was approved by the Planning Commission, then it came over, we had the public hearing, as you can see here on 9/13, there was many people there who were, entities and, and individuals that were in support of this, this new institutional district in District 1, so, but there was also some questions and some opposition to the, to the plan from surrounding neighbors, and, you know, I'm happy to, to see AGH's commitment to the discussion around what they can do to make it more livable for the residents around there and to set up a direct line and a meeting to meet with these individuals to, you know, like talk about the timeline, because I think the biggest, you know, there is some, there is a, a timeline for where they want to build, and, and so, you know, just to make sure that conversation's had between the residents so they know what to expect, but I think ultimately they're, obviously they're concerned with noise and construction, that's definitely, you know, an issue for them, so appreciate AGH's leadership on making sure that they're heard and that they're going to minimize impact, but also, I just want to give a shout out to them and the workers there that they, you know, so not only does AGH have the, you know, they're the biggest employer on the North Side, but they also recently negotiated, you know, with SEIU Healthcare, a great contract for the workers, and, you know, I just appreciate the, the leadership on both sides to come to a historic agreement that, you know, provides much better wages, you know, as average of 23% increase, not over three years, but, you know, almost immediately with some positions. And, you know, I just want to say that on the North Side, we have, Allegheny General has a real leader in showing what's possible for wages and how employees can be treated, so I hope they continue to, you know, capitalize on this commitment and, and, you know, I think that there'll be, I hope this improves care all around for people that come to the hospital. I know my whole family's been getting care there for, for decades now and, and just, and just like most North Siders, but now it's just, you know, everywhere around the, the region and country, people come to these different hospitals in Pittsburgh, and so I really appreciate AGH setting an example here, and I think they see it as a real opportunity to attract the, the, some great workers and nurses to the, to the facility as well. So good to see that there's even more to come here, more jobs to be created, more good union jobs, because that is their commitment as well, when I met with them, that they're interested in making sure, they're, they committed to making sure that the new positions that would be created here, you know, would, would be able to tie into, you know, obviously there's probably some, some legal stuff to work out, but, you know, they're committed to honoring what's been negotiated here in the current contract to these future employees, so I'm really excited to hear that as well. So just looking forward to the passage of this today, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Firm to recommendation. That takes us to our new paper, Bill 2110.
Bill 2110, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 772 of 2016, Effective January 1, 2017, As Amended, Entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2017 Capital Budget and the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program, Approving the 2017 through 2022 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Lynn Williams Highrise by $2,500 and St. Ambrose Manor by $1,299.35 and Increasing Pittsburgh Higher Ground Foundation, Inc. by $3,799.35 and Authorize Subsequent Agreements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Firm to recommendation. That takes us to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology Committee, chaired by Councilman Warwick, our first new paper is Bill 2104.
Bill 2104, Resolution Amending Resolution 280 of 2023, Which Authorized the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter an Agreement with Opex Corporation for Maintenance Services Related to the Falcon Red Document Scanning workstation by Adding Additional Funding to Cover Maintenance Services at a Cost Not to Exceed $2,365.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Firm to recommendation, Bill 2105.
Bill 2105, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 482 of 2022, Which Authorized the City of Pittsburgh to Extend a Professional Service Agreement with STR Grants LLC for Software Services relating to the E Properties Plus Profiling System by a Term of One Year and an Additional Cost Not to Exceed $54,658.65 and Adding 10 Additional User Licenses.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Firm to recommendation.
I'm abstaining, just to.
One abstention, Bill 2106.
Bill 2106, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of U.S. Ignite in the Amount of $30,000 for Annual Dues for U.S. Ignite Communities Membership Only.
A motion to approve, brief discussion?
Second.
Discussion, Councilman?
Yeah, I thought just maybe to, to explain a little bit about what U.S. Ignite is.
Good afternoon, I'm Gwendolyn Moore, Assistant Director of Business Technology, and this is Andrew Hayhurst, our Senior Manager Innovation, and he can explain more about the project to you.
Yeah, so, U.S. Ignite is a nonprofit that provides consultative services to cities to help them kind of improve smart city project delivery, and so that's what we're looking for, is for them to help us kind of create a strategy around smart cities, provide some consulting around existing projects that are exist, like LED lights and things like that.
Yeah, so I guess, just to sort of, because a little bit about what, as far as what you spoke about with my staff, just how we've sort of been approaching this smart city thing a little bit piecemeal, like a little of this, but how this will provide some best practices around kind of a unified strategy.
Absolutely.
I don't know if you want, yeah.
Yeah, I thank you for teeing that up. Yeah, so I was informally named our Smart Cities Coordinator for the city, but I've also been kind of managing multiple jobs, and so the creation of a strategy has fallen to the wayside, so I think that them coming in and helping, that's one of the first things we really want them to do, is to help us create a roadmap for creating a smart cities or digital cities strategy, and partnering with other cities that they have in their vast network to kind of level set against what cities have done, get best practices, and then help us create that, that strategy and roadmap.
And one thing too, because this is always my, what I hesitate with in sort of lots of smart, you know, smart city technology, is that they, there oftentimes tends to be sort of a lack of equity and also just kind of like pushing jobs to the wayside, I'm thinking of like robot food, you know, food delivery robots and things like that, which, you know, seem very shiny and whatnot, but, you know, it's questionable, is that really something that's useful for resident, you know, for residents, so sort of your thoughts around that and how this might help?
I, I certainly, and part of having a strategy and roadmap is that we can put an equity lens to that, as well as get, you know, community feedback on what are the goals and desires of making Pittsburgh a smart city, right, like, we have tons of smart city projects already in the works or deployed, from smart spines that Domi's working on, to LED lights, to ShotSpotter with public safety and camera systems, like there's lots of smart cities, so trying to come up with a unified strategy that we can work with all the departments on to create, and so, yeah, I mean, I think, I don't think IMP wants to be setting the direction of what smart cities projects we're working on, we're just trying to help bring people to the table so that we can create it as a, as a city.
That's all for me.
Thank you, Councilman Gross.
Thank you, hi Andrew, happy to see you here. I have just got to say, I've, also, I'm just kind of skeptic when it comes to a lot of smart cities rhetoric, and a lot of it has been sales pitches by technology companies for technology that's unproven and has turned out badly. Councilwoman Smith, Councilwoman Harris and I sat here in front of the Veolia leadership at PWSA with their smart meters that ruined the billing system, we had 50,000 bad accounts where cost households, individual households, I know, were overbilled by the thousands of dollars without recourse and forced to pay, and it was a badly, badly, badly implemented smart city technology that was, you know, in the midst of lawsuits by many cities across the country, so we don't need another one of those, we don't need repeats, I've, you know, from social media surveillance without guardrails to the LED streetlights, which again, are, there are lawsuits in multiple cities and some bad actors, just literally bad, bad companies selling bad products, to, you know, we've had facial recognition technology discussions with, there's a, opening the space for the discussion is the important part, right? So I really appreciate that, and so I really hope that we take a critical perspective. We have issues around broadband access that we have unsolved, and yet, you know, companies will try to pitch us on high-tech solutions that are, you know, false promises, so we really need to, to keep our eyes wide open and to have a healthy, robust public debate about where we should be making these choices, so I really, I really appreciate that, and I just can not chime in on that, because we can waste a lot of money and don't need to, so appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Schlossberger.
Thank you. I'm wondering if in your role and with this sort of more holistic plan for smart cities implementation, you'll be then also engaging from your position in the comprehensive planning process, is that going to overlap?
What was the question?
The comprehensive planning process that the city, the Department of City Planning is?
I did participate in that evaluation of the responders, and we have been working with Karen, we are assisting from the technical side in that instance, and I would assume that as we develop our strategy, she will participate, someone from that department will participate in that planning as well, so as Andrew said, we're not doing it as an isolated department, it's going to be a comprehensive project that we will do with all departments as well as our constituents, it's just that the smart that Ignite gives us the expertise that we don't have to bring together all of those different stakeholders and make sure we hear all of their voices.
And I can't even imagine not having actually lived through a comprehensive planning process that came to fruition and not also understanding all that goes into smart cities plans as well, I can, I can still imagine there'd be points of intersection and, you know, even the Climate Action Plan post agenda we had last week, right, like, the idea that perhaps our new, some of our new LED lights can also have charging stations for electric vehicles attached to them as a smart city implement, you know, if that was something that we all agreed as a city we wanted to go in that direction, whatever, you know, like there's even tiny micro points of intersection, so I wanted to make sure that there wasn't like a separate planning process happening over here and over here and that it would be.
That's why I participated in that process with them.
Great, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Firm to recommendation, thank you all for being here.
Have a nice afternoon.
That exhausts our agenda, we do have meeting announcements. Due to the November 7th general election, there is no meeting tomorrow. On Wednesday, November 8th at 1:30, Council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 2061 regarding liquor license transfer for the Games and Axes LLC.
Where is that, Dana? Who's district?
Bruce. Also, in observance of Veterans Day holiday on Friday, November 10th, all council and clerk's offices will be closed. Also, next Monday, November 13th, council's regular meeting will commence with the mayor's 2024 budget address at 10:00 a.m., and on Tuesday, November 14th, council will hold a standing committee meeting at 10:00 a.m., and at 1:30 p.m., council will begin to, will begin an overview of the policy discussion for the 2024 budget. Cheering is Councilman Lavelle. And on Wednesday, November 15th, budget hearings are set to begin. Anything from members? If not, motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.